702, please stand for the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Evening, everybody. We're gonna go a little bit out of order tonight. Still having technical difficulties. So we're gonna go to recognition?
We have two recognitions this evening, we're just gonna change the order of them on the agenda. So our first recognition, we'd like to recognize Malu Sousa. So Malu, if you could come up to the table, that would be great. And Mrs. Goodwin, we'll ask Mrs. Goodwin to join her, who's our ELL teacher, we'll tell a little bit about Malu and the recognition we want her to do this evening. So Malu enrolled with us from Brazil, December 3rd in 2018. And at the time, Malu's English skills, her English proficiency was really limited. She didn't speak a lot of English, and her understanding of English was also limited. And it's just amazing the strides that Malu has made in terms of her English language proficiency. And her strides have been, she's come so far, and she's made such great progress, that she's actually earned what's called the Seal of Bilinguality. And so tonight, our recognition is we're gonna present her with the Seal of Bilinguality and a medal, and a recognition. And I'll tell you a little bit about what that is, and then we'll give Malu and Mrs. Goodwin an opportunity to talk about that. Mrs. Goodwin's our ELL teacher at Middle High School, who's been working with Malu over the past year. But to earn the Seal of Bilinguality, she has to prove that she is literate in two languages. And to do that, she has to pass exams. And including in that process, she has to pass the MCAS exams. So Malu passed both the math and the English 10th grade MCAS exams in May, all in English. So she came to us in December with very limited English proficiency, and I feel bad saying that, like, you know, because it had nothing to do with Malu's limitations, it's just she, you know, she didn't really speak the language at all. And in five months, she took the MCAS exams in English and scored proficient on both math and the English MCAS exam, which was just tremendous. Then she also had to pass another exam. The other exam was probably a little easier, she had to take an exam in Portuguese, which was her native language. And so she passed Portuguese exam as well. So by passing the MCAS in English and the exam in Portuguese, she earns the Seal of Bilinguality. So, and then I'll just read what Desi says, "The Seal of Bilinguality is an award that recognizes students who've achieved proficiency in English, as well as one or more additional languages, whether it be a native language, a heritage language, or an additional language learned at school. It's a statement of accomplishments that helps signal evidence of a student's readiness for college and career, and to be engaged as a global citizen." And Malu is certainly ready to be engaged as a global citizen. So it's just tremendous. She really just came in, and from my perspective, always had a positive attitude, always had a smile on her face, even at times when she maybe didn't understand you. Always challenged herself. So one challenge I remember specifically is that, I don't remember exactly when it was, but Malu with her family, I believe, was taking a trip to New York City. And I happened to be walking through the building, and I went into the classroom, and I spoke to Malu, and I spoke to Mrs. Goodwin, and Mrs. Goodwin kind of explained to me, "Malu's goal is she's gonna go to New York this weekend, and she's gonna do everything in English, she's gonna go to New York City." Though she's probably kinda proud to people in New York City who spoke Portuguese, but she said, "I'm gonna go to a restaurant, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna do everything I'm gonna do in New York, and I'm gonna do it all in English." So she like set herself these little individual challenges in terms of acquiring the language. So like I said, it's been tremendous, and she's just been really an inspiration to our students in Carver, and really an inspiration to me, and to everyone who she's worked with at Carver Middle High School in the 14 months she's been here in Carver. So with that, I'll give Mrs. Goodwin or Malu an opportunity to say anything if they want to, and then we'll present Malu with the medal and certificate.
Sure.
Just pull that microphone.
Hi, good evening. I have had the absolute pleasure of working with Malu Sousa since she first arrived. Everything that Mr. Neef has said is exactly what I have found working with Malu. She's a very motivated, kind, and intelligent young woman, and I see a very bright future for her. Whether she decides to stay here, or if she decides to go back, I just am so encouraged by how engaged and wonderful of a person she is. And I've really enjoyed every single day that we've had together. You're welcome.
We don't have to put pressure on you, you don't have to say it, we're here to recognize you.
I think it's a terrific accomplishment. You're an example of a student striving for more, an example for the rest of our students in the community. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the committee?
Just, you know, obviously from what Mr. Neef has said, you've been an asset to our whole community as a whole, and I hope that your ability has rubbed off on other kids to see that there's so much, you know, more that they can do. I mean, you took on a challenge, and you have exceeded, and that's great. So congratulations, I mean, this award is great, but I mean, this is just a stepping stone, right? You have, you know, your next award that you'll be getting, so that's great. Congratulations.
Yeah, and the MCAS is super impressive. And now you're in SAT mode if you haven't done it yet, or whatever else comes next, if that's the path you're going down, so I'm excited to see what you're gonna do in the future.
She just signed up for AP Environmental, so big thanks.
I will say, I know why Mrs. Neef said, she sits there, just smiles and looks at me, "Don't smile, because she doesn't understand." She's saying, "This guy doesn't understand me." This poor guy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, so Malu, if you can come on up, we'll present you. You probably might have to get a little bit larger landed, I don't know if I can put the medal on you.
Okay.
But I can definitely present you.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I don't wanna pluck you, but please.
That's fine, you're the star. Congratulations.
Alright, next moving on.
Oh, a little second recognition, we're gonna, I would like to bring up Dylan Yack, who was an 8th grader at Carver Middle High School. And Dylan was selected as our Project 351 ambassador. And I'll give you a general overview, and then we have a short video to show that tells you a little bit about what Project 351 is, and then we'll ask Dylan some questions about his experiences. So this was actually started by Governor Deval Patrick a few years back, saying that he wanted to really motivate students to be involved in community service activities. So his concept was, there's 351 communities in Massachusetts, so hence Project 351, and that each community, each town, or each city, could select one 8th grade student to represent their community, and put it to the schools to select that student based on character, leadership, hard work, dedication, to represent the community in a day of service. And so on Martin Luther King Day, all 351 students from across the state go into Boston, and they end up doing a service activity that day. And Project 351 has actually expanded out a little bit. So the first couple of years, they just did the one day of service, and that was the event. And now they've really challenged, and I think it's through the cooperation with the schools, communication, that they said, "Let's have this be a little bigger than just a one-day event." So they do have the one-day event on Martin Luther King Day, but now actually they challenge those students to be involved in community service activity within their own community for an entire year, until the next Project 351 ambassador is selected. So Dylan was selected as our representative. We'll show you a quick video, which kind of outlines what Project 351 is, and we'll talk to Dylan.
Being an ambassador, I think it means to be a kind leader.
Even the smallest of all acts make a difference.
You should share the love that you're given with anyone you can.
That one act of kindness goes one way.
Since Project 351, I've been more aware in my community of how much I can do to help others.
I wanna open my own nonprofit organization to help kids with autism and other disabilities.
I feel really happy right now to be doing things for other people, just like to know that something that I made is gonna go to somebody that really needs it.
Being an ambassador is like your jumpstart to being in the real world, to helping other people, and becoming a selfless person.
A great leadership lesson I've learned specifically through Project 351 is the idea that you're not above them when you're leading, you're with them.
You never serve down, that's always a rule, you always serve to your fellow brother in humanity.
I learned a lot of stuff today, and I wanna bring all that stuff I learned to my community. This is the best experience ever, I can't wait till the next time we meet up.
With all the new ideas, new information, I can actually make a difference to the people that I really want to meet, to the community.
So Dylan, if you could tell us a little bit about, well, first, congratulations on being selected as Carver's representative. It truly is a distinction, because it's, I don't even know if Dylan fully knows this, but he was selected by the faculty and the administration and staff at the middle school. They put out nominations, teachers vote, and selected based on those characteristics of potential leadership, current leadership ability, dedication to himself, and to the community, and just hard work. So that's a great recognition on the school level. So Dylan, what did you do on the Project 351 day?
So when I arrived in Boston, there were so many people there with signs greeting us, and we went to Faneuil Hall for the first part of the day, where I met up with the people in my group and the alumni leader who was with me. And shortly after that, Charlie Rose, one of the leaders with Project 351, came up to the stage and talked about how proud he was, and how excited he was, and a lot of other people, including Governor Baker, the police chief of Boston, Devin McCordy came up as well to talk about how proud they were. Shortly after that, I was stationed to the Pine Street Inn with my group, where I made activity books and rolled silverware for the cafeteria. After that, we went to the JFK Library, where we all met up, and Charlie Rose told us the numbers of lives we affected. So the 400 or so students affected almost 50,000 lives, which I was just shocked. Like, I didn't think that only 400 people could affect that many lives. And after that, we had a dinner party, and we went home for the night.
Sounds like a full day. And then, so you've decided to take out a project in the community, so what's your project gonna be?
So coming up, I'm starting a spring clothing drive for Cradles to Crayons, which is a place where they take lightly-used clothing, especially for kids under the age of 12 that are in need of clothing. So I've been working with the administration to set up a drop-off location inside the middle school and high school foyer for that.
And then obviously, anything we can do to help promote that, we'll do that as well.
Thank you.
So thank you. So what did you enjoy most about the experience?
The thing I enjoyed most was meeting so many new friends and really making a difference in my community.
Thank you very much, Dylan, we wanna recognize you, I don't know if we have questions or...
Any questions or comments?
No, no questions, but I know from the teacher and what it takes to be nominated and selected for that, so it's quite an accomplishment, I'm very proud of you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dylan.
Wait, 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 I have a question. Chill. Did you get to, did you ask Devin McCordy to wear his ring?
No.
No, but did he have it on, one of them?
No, he didn't.
What was your favorite part of the day?
My favorite part was definitely helping out at the Pine Street Inn, meeting new friends.
Very nice, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We didn't make Malu shake.
That's alright.
Dylan, I think they wanna do a picture.
Thank you. Good trouble. Alrighty, comments from the general public, do we have anyone from the public who wants to address the committee? Seeing none, comments from the APC?
Good evening, everyone. Tomorrow's last day till vacation, I'm sure everybody gets a little time off, gets to enjoy it. I feel like they always come at the right time, just when you get a little worn out, you get a little time off to rest and get recharged. Just, I wanna thank, I know it's on the agenda tonight, the education support professional evaluation. I just wanna thank everybody who worked on that, a lot of ideas were thrown around, and people working together collaboratively to get this done, so I hope you, as you look into it, are supportive of it as we are, so thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Update by Student Advisory Council.
Thank you for being here, Morgan.
Yes, thank you.
So for the month of January, Student Council took their leadership outside of Carver High School and expanded it with others. Saturday, January 11th, Best Buddies joined with Student Council for a bocce tournament at Walpole High School, and in total, 10 students went, five from Best Buddies and five from Student Council. The 13 students from Student Council traveled to Foxborough Regional Charter School for a regional conference, learning skills and activities to bring back to Carver. And January 31st, Student Council and Best Buddies from both Carver and Silver Lake joined together to have a day of activities and team building. So Carver had 14 students go, which was more than last year, so we were excited to increase the participation and focus to expand that throughout the year.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty, approval of minutes, January 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 9th regular session minutes.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or corrections or anything? Alright, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you clarify in a second with that?
Oh, Jason. Okay, reports from the superintendent.
Okay, first, personnel updates, we've had a little bit of movement in staff since our last meeting. We've had two resignations from ESPs. Kelly Hahn was an ESP at the elementary school, and Christine McCarron as an ESP at the elementary school. We've had one ESP announce their retirement, won't be effective until the end of the school year, and that was Pam Reed. She spent a number of years with us, and we'll be recognizing her as part of our retirement ceremony later on in the year. And then we've had some new hires. Ruth Ann Donovan as an ESP Special Education at the elementary school, Avery Sherwood as an ESP Special Education at the elementary school, and Frank Calori as a long-term substitute at the middle high school. So that's an update on our staff rumors.
Okay, moving on to vocal survey data.
So Mara's gonna make the presentation for us, I'll give her some brief background. The vocal survey is given to students in grades 4, 5, 8, and 10, to administer as part of the MCAS testing in the spring. And really, it gives students the opportunity to share their views of the school community in three categories: engagement, safety, and environment. And Mara's gonna give us a little bit more details about the survey itself and some of our results from last year's MCAS.
Thank you. So first, I wanna acknowledge that when Scott asked me to present on this, that I was able to meet with Mike Martin, who is an assistant principal at the middle high school, and who heads up the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. He was here, I think, last month or the month before. And he is remiss that he's actually not feeling well tonight, but he was gonna come and help present with me, so I just wanted to acknowledge his efforts to be here. So with that said, I'm getting a little error message saying that the whole presentation didn't load, so hopefully it did, and we'll continue. But vocal is a survey that is given to students in the Commonwealth in grades 4, 5, 8, and 10, and it's nestled up against the MCAS. So when students are done taking their spring MCAS test, it's an add-on at the end of the MCAS that allows students to weigh in on a variety of indicators that come in three different categories, that help provide districts data about the general climate of the school based on student perception. And from that, the three broad categories are engagement, safety, and environment. And this is now the second year that we have been given, the second year that we've been given the data. And the state has kind of cautioned us and has said, "Wait a couple more years until you start looking at trend data, but when you do, you'll be able to really kind of develop some action steps around trying to support students and look for trends in student perception and how they feel being involved in Carver Elementary and Carver Middle High School." So out of the three broad topics of engagement, safety, and the environment, there are kind of more subdomains within that. So engagement is meant to measure a couple different things. One is the relationships that students feel like they have with staff, and the social connection that they have not only with their teachers, but with other adults in the building, and with their peers and friends. And then the cultural and linguistic competency, so that's being open and willing to embrace diversity in different cultures, in different values, without stereotype. And then the last piece of engagement would be participation, so how connected they feel to being able to participate in things that are intellectual, or emotional, or behavioral in the classroom, and then in the larger school community. Under safety, we look at emotional safety, physical safety, and then bullying and cyberbullying. And again, these answers are based on student perception, so we kind of get a real, authentic read on how students are feeling about these big issues. And then the last broad topic is environment. So that would be the instructional environment that they experience in the classroom and outside in the classroom, and then the mental health, excuse me, that they have, and if they have help and access to support systems to help build their social-emotional learning and social-emotional competencies. And then the last piece is discipline. So do you feel that the school that you're in has fair discipline, that it's applied consistently, and that it's a shared responsibility among all stakeholders? So with that said, as we work to interpret this data, there are a couple of kind of noteworthy points before we look at how our students scored their school, or scored the climate. The first thing is, the state has been quick to point out kind of what is a statistically valid measure. So when you look at this data, in the big categories, they say that differences of three or four points or more is statistically valid or educationally meaningful. And then in the actual little item responses, and we'll look at some of the actual questions, and how our students answered, that seven percentage points is considered educationally meaningful, which means if they're nestled close together and they're two or three points, that that's just a deviation. So we've tried to make sure that we look, excuse me, at the data with that lens. And then, as I mentioned before, that there's currently insufficient data to be able to make these broad assumptions about trends, and that they expect that next year after the third year of data or more, we can start to make sense of that. The other thing that you'll notice is that our 4th and 5th graders report kind of higher confidence and higher scores when it comes to their involvement in school than our 8th and 10th graders do. And the state actually speaks to that and says that this pattern of results mirrors trends that are found in other states and nationally, probably because it's developmentally appropriate. So any of us that are currently parenting teenagers, or have ever parented teenagers, or will be parenting teenagers, know that their feelings around school and that sort of thing may wane a little bit and then start to swing back. So I just wanted to be mindful to point that out, because I don't want anyone to say, "Oh my goodness, the 8th grade score is so much lower than 4th grade," because that's not really what it's about. So to that end, Carver's data does align with the same thing that the state of Massachusetts and the nation sees, but I just wanna point out kind of what the state uses in terms of a scale. So this middle section right here talks about schools with typical school climates. So they have, they've divided it up into three sections: weak climates, typical climates, and strong school climates. And I just wanna point out that these bars indicate 4th grade, 5th grade, 8th grade, and 10th grade. And you can see the range for quote-unquote "typical" school climates change with each of those grade levels. So in 4th grade, what is considered typical is somewhere between 56 and 67, and in 8th grade, that's somewhere between 39 and 49. So they do that to account for that developmental difference. So we're gonna talk first about 4th grade, and we just talked about how the kind of zone of typical is between 56 and 67. So of our 4th graders, you'll see that Massachusetts is indicated in an orange circle, and Carver is indicated in a green diamond. So for school climate, we rate at 63, and the state rates at 61. We're more tightly nestled with engagement, and are just a point above the state. There's a three-point advantage that we have in terms of how safe students feel within their school in 4th grade, and then both the state and Carver report 62 on environment. So we picked out some sample questions that were reported out in an item analysis, and we just picked out two for each of the three broad areas. So an example of an engagement...
The other thing I wanted to point out, Martha, is that overall, there's about 40 questions in total. Because obviously, we have access to all 40 questions, we weren't gonna go through all 40 questions at the meeting. Just wanted to get a sample of each area.
Thank you. So under engagement, the question that students had to respond to is, "My teachers will explain things in different ways until I understand." And our school scored that, our students scored that, is 96, and at the state level, in general, it's 93. And I just wanna point out that we had 113 4th graders respond to these questions, and statewide, about 56,000 4th graders responded, so just to compare those two numbers. And then in terms of engagement, my teachers asked me to share what I have learned in a lesson, where about 70, and the state is a little bit closer to 80, so 79%. And then, Scott, do you wanna talk really quickly about when students get this question, they can answer, is it all the time?
Yeah, it's on a like, it's on a like and scale of all the time, almost all the time, sometimes rarely, never. And then this is the percentage, this is actually a percentage of students who answer the top two categories, of all the time or almost all the time. So for that first question, my teachers will explain things in different ways. 96% of our kids said all the time or almost all the time.
Thank you.
So would that mean that that 70 would be something that you would look at and say, "We need to address that"? Like, that's something that would not be...
Yeah, also, yeah, so when we get to the end with next steps, we're gonna talk about how we're gonna share the data with faculty and staff and the community and look at these. And then that 71 would be an area that the state would say was statistically significant, because there was more than a seven-point gap. And they're saying if it's less than seven points for an individual question, it's not statistically significant, that there's really a variation there.
Okay.
Thank you. So under safety, I feel safe at school. Our 4th graders, 98% of them, answered in those top two categories, whereas statewide, that was 93. And I feel comfortable talking to my teacher about something that is bothering me. Both our 4th graders and the state average were at 75. In terms of environment, we have in school, I learned how to manage or control my feelings when I am upset. And we scored above the state, 92% versus 87. And then teachers give students a chance to explain when they do something wrong, 93 and 89.
So Mara, I don't know if you just wanna talk, speak a little bit how we selected the questions we have. So as we said, there were 40 questions, we weren't gonna go through all 40, but just to give, you know, just a little background on why these questions are here versus other ones. But just to give, you know, just a little background on why these questions are here versus other ones.
Absolutely, and please feel free to add to that. So we wanted to pick some representatives that were going to come from each of the three categories. And then we also wanted to share pieces that we feel impact student instruction and also would indicate how students feel in terms of their social emotional learning. Because if you look at our educational blueprint, those are some main components to what we're working on and trying to build our school culture.
So we didn't, we didn't look at presenting, hey, we're going to present the strongest scores and the weakest scores or one strong, one win-oh, one weak. We actually went back to the educational blueprints and which questions we feel like align with those whole concepts of teaching and learning and social emotional health. And that's how, you know, we selected these questions.
Thank you. So in fifth grade, we have those same questions. But as I mentioned before, the kind of zone of typical school climate, the metric changes a little bit. So instead of 56 and 67, it's now down to 51 and 63, according to VOCAL. And that's throughout the state. So that would be the typical school range. And again, we're slightly above the state in fifth grade on school climate. We're on par with the state at 55% with engagement. We are above in both safety and the environment. And again, we're the green diamond and the state is the orange circle. So looking at those same questions that we looked at last time, "My teacher will explain things in different ways until I understand." We're at 93%. The state is at 90. "My teacher asked me to share what I have learned in a lesson." So that same question where there's a one-point spread, the state is at 76. And then you can continue reading through the same questions for safety and the environment and look at the differences in those scores as well. Okay, moving on to eighth grade. Again, the scales change. Instead of 51 to 63, the spread is 39 to 49. And we are at 42% for school climate. The state is at 43. We're on par with engagement. Students answered 40% on average for safety, and the state is at 44. And the environment is 43 and 44. So the questions are developmentally appropriate. They change. And so you'll see that these reflect some of the same kind of core beliefs as the first set of questions for fourth and fifth grade, but they're worded in a way that is supposed to be more appropriate for eighth grade. And 10th grade changes a little bit as well. So under engagement, I have a choice in how I show my learning, such as writing a paper, preparing a presentation, or making a video. Our school's at 61% for eighth grade. The state is at 62%. Adults working at the school treat all students respectfully regardless of a student's race, culture, family income, religion, sex or sexual orientation. We're above the state at 94%, where the state is at 88%. Safety. Teachers don't let students pick on other students in class or in the hallway. We're at 71%. The state average is 77%. If I tell a teacher or another adult that someone is being bullied, the teacher or adult will do something to help. We're at 87%, and the state is at 86%. And then in regards to emotions, again, you can see that this question parallels the question in fourth and fifth grade with slightly more mature wording. "If I need help with my emotions or feelings, effective help is available at my school." We're at 67% and 72%. And "The things I am learning in school are relevant or important to me." We're at about 51%, just over half of our students, and the state is at 60%. And then lastly, with 11th grade, the skill is pretty consistent with, I'm sorry, with 10th grade. The skill's pretty consistent with eighth grade. The range is 40 to 49. And the scores for 10th grade, we're at 42% for school climate. We're on par with the state at 45% for engagement, just below the state for safety. And we're at 41% for environment compared to the state at 45%. So under engagement, in at least two of my academic classes, I can work on assignments that interest me personally. We're at 56%, whereas the state is nine points above, at 65%. Again, adults working at the school treat all students respectfully regardless of a student's race, culture, family income, religion, sex or sexual orientation. We're at 90%, whereas the state is at 89. Teachers don't let students pick on other students in class or in the hallway. We're at 75 compared to 77 at the state. If I tell a teacher or another adult that someone's being bullied, the teacher or adult will help me do something. We're at 92% compared to the state at 89. And then, again, the wording's a little different, but the same core statement here. "I have access to effective help at school if I'm struggling emotionally or mentally." We are at 79%, which is on par with the state. And lastly, "I'm learning things in school that are relevant or important to me." We're at 40%, whereas the state is about half of all students in 10th grade feel that way.
And I know that, you know, in the earlier, earlier presentation, Meredith said that the state said we shouldn't be comparing these results to last year. They're looking for really three years of data before they start making some analysis. But I am interested to see our results on some of these questions, especially at the middle high school level next year because, you know, Mr. Schultz and the administration have really had a focus. The focus this year in the building really has been on this concept of relationships, relevance, and rigor. And then the whole concept of building out the pathways really goes to that concept of relevance and rigor as well. And there's been a lot of work done at the building, at the building level this year on those issues, though, and maybe issues is the right term, on those themes. And, you know, so when you look at the 10th grade surveys, obviously, the things I'm learning in school are relevant or important to me. You know, we're recognizing that that's an area we need to address things. And a lot of the work that's happening in the building is really focused on that. And obviously, really, there's been a lot of work, a real focus this year on the climate. And we're hoping to see some of that come out through next year's VOCAL data.
Thank you. So in terms of next steps, we have talked about this data with the administrative leadership team. As I mentioned, Mr. Martin was going to try to be here tonight. But in both buildings, administration has had a chance to look at this initial data as well as the individual items and the questions. And they're in the process of action planning how to share this with their staff. So at the middle high school, the Safe and Supportive School ambassadors were able to start to look at this data and to some degree, couple it with some of the other data points that they have. We always talk about the merit of multiple measures and looking at things from a lot of different angles. So as you know, Mr. Martin presented on SHADOW A Student and talked about some of these pieces around engagement and relevance and kind of the length of the day and that sort of thing. So they're in the process of kind of marrying some of this data with the data that they receive from SHADOW A Student. Additionally, as part of the Safe and Supportive Schools grant, they will be trained in a vision training called PACE, which stands for Personal Approach to Change and Equity. And it's really about creating inclusive cultures within schools where students' individual strengths are valued and where their individual needs are met in a very personalized manner. And then the last piece is really trying to continue to explore the Power Hour and perhaps launching that for next year. And there is supposed to be a visit to another high school that has done something similar to a Power Hour. It's a pretty common place feature that many schools have gone to to provide a little bit of a release valve for students during the day and to make sure that students who may have other commitments after school are able to get some academic or social emotional help during the day. And I believe that that site visit is rescheduled for sometime in March. Likewise, at the elementary level, they're in the process of deciding their next steps. There has been some talk of potentially doing the SHADOW A Student protocol there as well as some of the other work that Safe and Supportive Schools group is doing in that arena around their SEL toolbox and some of those pieces. And then the last piece that I will mention is we have a district-wide Social Emotional Learning Committee that will most likely look at this data as well. And the idea is to really make sure that there is an opportunity for all staff to review this data and to recognize that over the course of three or more years that we can start looking at those trends, but that this is student perception and that there's a value to looking at that and how it's captured in terms of making some meaningful improvements, but also honoring the things that we're doing well.
Thank you.
Not at this time.
Any comments?
I think when it comes to the, looking at the trends year to year, I think, you know, looking at grade four to grade four to grade four is good. But I'd be curious if the state keeps this up long-term, like over a seven-year, a group of fourth graders. And then seven years later, when that same group takes it in 10th grade, how that trend, that same group goes, and we can keep seeing those trends there. I think that might give us a lot of good, and that's a long way down the road. But I think that's something else that we can try to keep in mind when we start looking at trends, too.
Same, following the same students?
Yeah, following the same students as they, as they say, see how their perceptions as that group goes through.
And you're even going to see that a little bit next year because the students took it the first time in eighth grade. Students took it the first time in eighth grade, will take it in 10th grade this year. So you'll have that comparison of this is how they responded in eighth grade, that's how they responded in 10th grade. So you'll start to see that a little bit. And there's a lot of good data here. There's a lot of good information to take a look at. And it's really giving students a voice in terms of how they feel about the, this whole community.
I think what you, you know, kind of hit earlier about pathways and what we're doing, data's great, but what do you do with it, right? And you have to see and how it grows from data. And I think, you know, what Mr. Schultz is doing at the high school is taking it, saying, all right, well, you know, these are some problem areas. How do we address them and move forward and get better? And that's exactly what we're doing. And I think that really speaks to what we're doing with the data. So it's great.
I agree. Thank you. I have nothing to add. Stephanie, you have anything? Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
So we'll be on to the Student Opportunity Act. So in January, the governor released his budget with his planned implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. This is the first year of a planned seven-year phase-in of increased funding under the Student Opportunity Act, which was passed in the fall. The reality is Carver is one of 183 districts, or 57% of those districts in the state, that is still only going to receive minimum Chapter 70 aid of an increase of $30 per pupil. That whole concept of held harmless that we've talked about a lot. So for that, for us, this translates to approximately $47,500 in additional aid for Carver for next year. But from our perspective, we don't really view it as additional aid. We've been getting that per pupil increase for several years in a row now. Some years it's $20, some years it's $30. I think the first year I was superintendent, actually, it was $90 that one year. But generally, it falls in that $20 to $30 per student range. So there isn't a lot of change there. Where we're really going to see the benefit is we're going to, hopefully, is we're going to see the benefit through being able to fund Circuit Breaker Transportation. We'll now be able to use towards, will be refunded, will be funded through Circuit Breaker. The proposal in the governor's budget is 25% reimbursement the first year. So they're, they're going to phase this in over four years. As the argument, the current proposal is 25% in the first year. The legislature hasn't passed that yet. Brad sometimes tells us the question of whether they'll actually fund it at 25%, but that's the proposal. The other place where we may see a little bit of benefit is the law requires that they fully fund the charter school formula of 100% reimbursement in the first year, 60% in years two and three. And historically, that's been subject to appropriations, and the legislature always hasn't appropriated that money. So it's, it's never fully funded the formula, and the law requires that it does. So we should see some benefit in that piece. But we don't know what the dollar benefits of those things are going to be yet. And as we go into our budget planning, as we come up for our public hearing on the budget at the February, and as we propose a budget for next year, we really can't take that money into account because we don't know what it's going to be. Now, next year, we might have a different, we might be in a different position on that because we'll have a better sense of what the, you know, the reimbursement will be through Circuit Breaker for specialized transportation. And we'll have a little bit of sense on if they're going to fully fund the charter school formula. So we're really just looking at the $47,000.
Excuse me. Aren't they locked in, though, for the, for the transportation for the 25 this next year?
No, they've proposed that. The legislature hasn't passed, legislature hasn't passed yet. It's not a requirement.
It wasn't part of the legislation?
No. So that is still subject to appropriations. The plan is that it would be phased in over four years to 75%. I, I believe they'll fund it at 25% next year. So I, I believe that will happen. Right. So I think 25% is a pretty low threshold for the first year, and 25% is going to help us. You know, so we have, we have cost, we have cost through specialized transportation and getting, be able to receive Circuit Breaker reimbursement for that 20, for that, for 25% of those costs over the threshold of around $50,000 per student, et cetera, et cetera. You know, that's, that, there's going to be a benefit for us yet. But we're not, we're not looking, as we plan for our budget for next year, we're not incorporating any of that benefit at this time. All right? And we'll get that, we'll get to that more when we get into the budget presentation. So, so under, under the law, all districts are required to present a plan to be approved by the school committee on how it plans to use the Student Opportunity Act money to increase its benefit for underperforming students. So I have to actually write a plan by April 1st that has to be approved by the school community, by the school committee, that says how we're going to spend that $47,500 to help students. Once, once it's approved by the school committee, it needs to be reviewed by DESI. Now, DESI has issued some guidance and some templates on this, and we'll, I'll take you through that a little bit. But my intention is to, I wanted to inform the community tonight, inform the committee tonight. My goal is to have a draft plan for our next meeting in February, which we'll propose along with the budget. And then we'll look for the committee to vote and approve the plan in March. So that's kind of my timeline in terms of what we'll have to do here. You know, it's an interesting, you know, this has caused some concerns across the state because there are districts that are facing budget cuts next year. And they're saying, you want me to write a plan for how I'm going to spend my $47,000 when I'm, I'm going to propose cuts? So, and, but the, we met with Commissioner O'Reilly, and he said, the law does require, the law does require that every district write a plan, no matter how much money you're bringing in. Now, the plan only has to do with the increase in Chapter 70 funding. Your plan doesn't have to involve specialized Circuit Breaker. It doesn't have to involve monies you're going to bring in through charter school reimbursement. It only, it only involves that per pupil aid, which for us is $30 per pupil at $47,500. So my plan will, that will be my budget number in the plan of how I'm going to utilize that money. But I guess I want to really reinforce for people, in my mind, and from my perspective, this isn't really additional monies. It was the money we, it's a very similar amount of money that we've received every year. But we will, I will develop a plan that says how that $47,000 will be utilized.
Small work for you.
And I'll present, I will present it to the committee for the committee's approval. And, and we'll have a public hearing on it. So we'll open it up, you know, we'll state it as a public hearing on the Student Opportunity Act plan and make the community aware that they can come in and hear and have their thoughts on how that money is going to be spent. So what I want to share with you, which kind of says a lot of things I just said, but we, Meredith and I actually did have the opportunity to go out and meet with Commissioner O'Reilly. I will say that the DESI commissioner has been very active in terms of going out to the community and explaining what's happening through the Act. And he's been meeting with all the superintendent's roundtable groups. So each area, each area of Massachusetts has a superintendent's group, and he's been going out to each of those meetings. So he came to our meeting a week ago. He presented. I presented this presentation and talked about it a little bit. So I'll just, we'll just go through his slideshow. So Meredith, if you don't mind going back up. I know it's a little repetitive on. So this is just, like I said, this is, this is Commissioner O'Reilly's presentation. The thing I wanted to point out is the second poll report here, I'm not going to read this whole presentation to you. As a result of this change, 37 districts received 85% of the money. So there are districts that have received significant funds. But, but it really comes down to a small group. And the districts that have received the significant funds, and these are things we've talked about before as a committee, are those districts that have maintained their student population, so they haven't had a loss of student population. It's those districts that have an increased number of ELL students, which are actually, our ELL population is growing, but not at the rate at some other districts. And, and districts who have a higher low-income population. And not, and not that our low-income population's been a little bit, has been steady. So we, we've had a declining population, small growth in ELL, a big for us. Um, so we had, we've had a declining population, small growth in the ELL, a big for us, but small comparatively, uh, and we've stayed pretty level over the last few years in terms of, uh, economically disadvantaged students. And how they funded the formula was based on those, those groups, just overall number of students, ELL students, and, um, economically disadvantaged students. Uh, so those districts that have maintained or grown their population in all those areas have received significant funding. Uh, in the end, it's 37 districts get 85% of the money in the law. Uh, so there are some districts that are bringing in some, that this is a huge change for them, a huge impact for them. And quite honestly, a lot of those districts, not that we need to, this presentation isn't about those districts, we wanna talk about Calver, uh, but ultimately, those, a lot of those districts were districts that were really just at net school spending, you know, they were just meeting the thresholds of supporting their school district, and now this infusion of funds really is gonna put them in a different place, uh, and really does promote equity throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, our focus of the law does say, in an effort to close persistent achievement gaps, all districts require to spend a three-year evidence-based plan, so the evidence-based plan has to be focused around the concept of, uh, closing gaps for students or reaching students who may have been underserved. And, um, and they give you a lot of direction on how you can do that, alright? There's four statutory requirements for districts for their evidence-based plan, um, it has to talk about how you're gonna spend the money, resource allocation, has to be evidence-based practices, there has to be some parent or community engagement, and there has to be a measurement, an outcome measure. Uh, the law actually spells out these evidence-based practices, expanded learning time, common planning time for teachers, social, emotional, and physical health services, hiring school personnel to improve student performance, uh, increase to improve professional development, curriculum materials, equipment aligned with state standards, expanding early education and pre-kindergarten programming, diversifying the educator or administrator workforce, uh, and then additional pathways to strengthen college and career readiness. So, you might see that this, how I'm gonna say we're spending our $47,000 is tied to our pathways to, uh, strengthen college and career net readiness, that's specifically identified in the law, uh, and we're gonna be doing some new things that way, and so I think that's gonna make sense for my plan to be aligned to that concept of, uh, you know, additional pathways to strengthen college and career readiness. Beyond what's in the law, you can go to the next slide, Meredith, DESI has actually also specifically, uh, listed out 17 types of programs that could be, uh, funded through this. I'm not gonna read you the list of 17, but they're, they're similar to these topics, so they've actually expanded this out a little bit, and they basically said, if you say in your plan that you're using your money to do one of the things on our list of 17 things, or something directly from the law, your plan's gonna be approved. Uh, so obviously, it said you could do something else, you could come up with a creative idea, but they're really kind of advocating that you go with, we're gonna lay out the suggestions for you of where this money should be spent, and if, we're telling you if you put it in one of those categories, it's gonna be, go forward. Uh, so, what's DESI's approach, uh, instead of, they're asking districts to start to do a few things and do the right things, so they're realizing that a lot of districts, it's not a lot of money, so you, this plan can just evolve, involve one thing, it doesn't have to be, uh, a district-wide improvement plan that's 20 pages long. They said, we don't want that, and that's not what we're looking for. Uh, so again, going, Meredith, you can go to the next slide. Make it easy to make good choices, as I just said, they gotta provide a, a menu of evidence-based initiatives, uh, incentivize adoption of two or three of the commissioner's priorities. Now, this is what they've, uh, identified as, so DESI has said, we'd really love to see you do one of these three. Uh, and I'm not saying we're not gonna be tied to one of these three, but they said, well, if you really do this, you, then you get a, a super A. Uh, so they said money for full day, high-quality pre-K for four-year-olds, uh, and evidence-based early literacy, increase the percentage of high school students enrolled in early college programs, uh, and their early college reference here is not pathways, their early college reference here is the concept of, almost like dual enrollment, where students have the opportunity to take, uh, anywhere from nine to 16 credits in dual enrollment, uh, with a community college, uh, and train, and that, that can be a pathway to push students to college attendance, uh, so that's what they mean by early college. Uh, and then recruitment and retention strategies to diversify the educator or administrative workforce. Uh, the, those are the three priority areas from DESI. But as I said, um, there's a bigger menu, uh, beyond those, beyond those three. Meredith, go to the next slide. We, DESI realized that since 37 districts are getting 87, 85% of the money, uh, that maybe they need to have two forms, two types of plans, so, um, this is just 10 actual districts. If your district is receiving less than $1.5 million, you have to do what's called a short form. The short form's a few pages, uh, and so the plan I'm gonna be doing, since we have $47,000, will be the short form, and what you'll have to see presented to you will be the short form. Those districts receiving more than 1.5 million, so those 37 districts that are getting large amounts of funds, they have to do a much more intensive plan of how they're gonna be spending that money. And I just give you some examples here, uh, with, you know, Lawrence, Chelsea, and Chicopee being three of the 37 districts that are receiving, uh, over $1.5 million, uh, of increased aid. Okay, so some key dates and timelines, we kinda already hit this, uh, you know, it needs to be approved by the school committee, uh, and the plans need to be submitted by April 1st. So the plan has to be developed, approved by the school committee, and submitted to DESI prior to April 1st. They realize that that's a quick turnaround, uh, so I, I mean, if you're a district that has to do a long form, literally all this guidance just came out the first week in February. So those districts have really been given two months to say, you have to put this all together and explain, um, how you're gonna use this money. Uh, and for those districts, they have a higher threshold of community engagement, they want them to do parent surveys, they want them to hold public forums, because they're saying, you're bringing in a lot, you know, you're bringing in $2 million, we want, we really want the public to weigh in on how you're gonna spend that $2 million, where there's a less of a focus on that in the districts like us, that are just bringing in the, per, you know, the $30 per student.
In two months.
Spend it all in two months. So a little bit of pressure on those districts. Uh, but, but, we're, but we're not one of those districts, so, so we don't have to worry that much about that, uh, that timeframe. So that, that's kind of an overview, so as, as a, as final closeout, I'll repeat it, uh, my goal is to have a plan developed for you for our February 25th meeting, uh, I want to ask the committee to vote the plan that night, I want you to think about it, um, give the, the community the opportunity to think about it, uh, and then we'll bring that plan back in our March meeting, and look to vote the plan in March.
Alright.
Any questions about, uh, and, and there's, there has been a lot of news on this in the last month or so, because, you know, the numbers have been released, uh, so I think it's good to get that conversation out there for the community, and I, and for us, I really wanna make that distinction of, um, not that it's not new money, of the 47, $47,000 is $47,000, uh, but I don't wanna have a misconception within the community that the Student Opportunity Act is bringing a huge change in funding for the Calver Public Schools.
Right.
And there is gonna be some real benefits that we'll see down the line through specialized Circuit Breaker and full funding of charter school, uh, reimbursement.
There's two parts I wanted to say.
Yeah.
For us. Anybody else have questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just my fear with the transportation is, I think the state's gonna be in for a shock once districts actually start calculating out what true costs are, and they have preliminary data that we submit through our, our new report, but I think districts are gonna now with reimbursement are gonna start really looking at where they're submitting it, and making sure they're submitting on the right line.
Scott and I talked about this before, my, one of my, if it hasn't happened already, I think it's going to happen, that they might put a cap on these transportation companies, how much they're gonna pay out, because now the state's, if the community says, oh, we're gonna do, we'll get 75% back from the state, they can just up their prices, up their rates, and they'll get reimbursed.
And I'll be honest with you, if we have a student power that we can't transfer ourselves, we're calling eight to 12 vendors just to find one to take the student wherever they need to be.
Right.
So there's even, there's a need for vendors on top of that.
Right.
So, it's not a, it's a good time to be a, a vendor in the, in the, in the organization or for, for profit, but it's not a good time to be a district searching for a company to do it.
Transportation's a problem all over.
Yeah.
And, and obviously, we'll get more, we'll get more into this on February 25th when we present the budget, but I do think it makes sense to not, uh, take into account any of that money for next year's budget. We'll see how, we'll see what the real funds are that come in next year, and that'll give us a better sense as we prepare a year out.
Speaking of transportation, we'll move on to bus cameras.
Alright, bus cameras. Uh, we've had some concerns about people passing buses while stop, while the stop sign is out. You know, so the bus comes to stop, lights come out, uh, and there's been some phone calls to the office, um, I guess there's been some posting on social media, of people saying, hey, I saw that happen, I saw the bus, bus lights out, and a car come flying by. Uh, most of the time, uh, people aren't passing the bus from behind, it's, it's the traffic coming in the opposite direction. So the light, you know, the bus stops, the sign, stop sign comes out with the lights, the lights are flashing, and then it's whatever, this person just doesn't see it, it comes down this way. So we actually spoke to the drivers about it as well, uh, and they said it is a concern of theirs, it does happen, it has been happening, uh, so they're concerned about it. So based on this concern, we wanted to at least bring it to the attention of the community, bring it to the attention of the committee, uh, and we're beginning the process of investigating, um, maybe possibly mounting cameras on the bus arms, uh, as a deterrent to possibly catch people, uh, who do happen to pass the bus. Uh, we've been in communication with Chief Doofly and the Calver Police, uh, they said if we had, if we had a camera and the camera was able to catch a car, a license plate, a make and model of a car, that they would be willing to issue, uh, either a warning or a citation or a ticket, uh, based on that, that footage, uh, for someone who did that. Uh, you know, so there's a couple of factors we have to look at here, uh, we have to look at cost, obviously, uh, we have to also, Brad's also been working with the Department of Transportation in terms of the legality of where the, where the cameras can be, where they can be mounted, uh, but I don't know if they have, have a piece as you want to put on.
I'm playing phone tag with the director of, uh, pupil transportation, but, um, reality is, there's a lot of other states that have done this, and they actually third-partyed out to a company, and there was a lot of embezzlement, um, actually with money going disappearing, with people paying in the ticket, who got a piece of it, um, so there's been a lot of lawsuits and litigation going on in that, um, regard, so that is one area that we may have access to if we wanna look at a company doing that, that's an option, um, but I really wanna get a full array of options for you guys to, to view and look at, um, before making any decisions on it.
So-
But the biggest piece is, I wanna find out what's legal and not, before we even start this whole process, otherwise it's, um, it's a waste of our time.
Yeah, so we're, we don't have a official proposal this evening, uh, but we wanted to bring, make the committee aware that this is something we started to look into, and then it was a concern brought to us by the community, uh, so we're addressing, we're, we're taking that concern in, and we're starting to investigate what steps we can take, uh, to, you know, deal with that concern.
I wanna, uh, applaud Brad and Scott for taking this on, because I brought this to their attention. I mean, this has been an ongoing thing, people have said this is going on, but I, just by scanning the Calver Facebook pages, I've been seeing it more and more, people making comments about it. So I actually threw a question out on both the main Calver pages, asking about, am I, am I, am I reading this wrong, are there more of these incidents? And I just got comment after comment after comment after comment, of people saying, I saw, I see it all the time. Some of them were bus drivers, some of them were parents, regular residents, and I actually took screenshots and I sent them to these guys, and I said, um, this is one of those times where I think we need to take social media seriously, you know, because unfortunately, a lot of people don't, don't wanna call the office, they don't wanna call the police department, but they'll, they're quick to put something on social media, that's just kinda the reality we live in right now. So I try to, um, take it seriously on that issue, but I think I'd rather be proactive with this than reactive, and if someone knows, even if we advertise it or put it on the back of the bus that you're being filmed or something, you know, maybe people might think twice before they pass a bus, and, uh, you know, God forbid anybody get hurt. So, um, thank you for the update, you know?
And as we're gonna get more information, we'll bring that back to the committee.
Anybody have any comments or anything?
I wanna say thank you also, 'cause I was actually gonna bring this up independently on my own, because it's happened literally with my children crossing the street, so, um, I'm glad that, I'm glad this is happening, so thank you.
Alright, move.
Alright, moving on to tiered focus monitoring. Uh, so earlier in the year, Karen did a preliminary presentation about our tiered focus monitoring review in March. Uh, as a reminder, every six years, the Department of Education does a compliance review of school districts adherence to special education, ELL, and civil rights laws and regulations. Uh, the review used to be called the coordinated program review. Uh, last year, DESI changed the name to tiered focus monitoring, uh, and it's also now created a new three-year cycle. The review has two stages, and stage one, the district provides evidence online of its adherence to all the guidelines and regulations, uh, and, hold on, you can all say, Meredith, uh, and, uh, we're, we were in stage one last year, we submitted all of our evidence. Based on DESI's review of the evidence, uh, that we provided, we've been given the rating of tier one, self-directed improvement, data points indicate no concern on compliance and performance outcomes. So basically, they said, well, when we look what you guys uploaded, everything looks like it's in place, you're in a pretty good shape. Uh, that, that rating of tiered one, self-directed improvement, data points indicate no concern on compliance or performance, is the highest rating you can get in the first stage of the process. Uh, in stage two, representatives actually come out for a site visit, and we told you that we would give you more information about the site visit as we got closer. Uh, so our, our site visit is scheduled for March 17th, so it's coming up. Uh, during the site visit, um, representatives review files and interview a range of staff members, uh, to determine if the evidence we've submitted is happening in practice. At the end of the process, the district will be assigned a rating and given recommendations if needed, on how we can better meet the guidelines and regulations for special education, ELL practices, and civil rights. Uh, so I'm gonna give a very brief review of the process, uh, and what's gonna happen on the 17th, uh, and this is, this might be the quickest slide presentation ever, that's, that's the goal. Uh, so our visiting team, they've identified our visiting team, Kenzie Chin, Amy Pollan, and Michelle Hennessy, I don't know if I'll say Michelle's last name, Kellecheck. Uh, and so we, we've actually done a preliminary phone call with them, we've had some discussions, some emails going back and forth, planning the actual, uh, day of the visit, the 17th. Coming up to visit, there are some things that are gonna be happening, and I wanted the community to be aware of. So, uh, as part of the process, we do have to provide an email address for all of our special education students, uh, and their parents, uh, and DESI actually sends them a survey. So if you're a parent of a special education student, uh, you're gonna be receiving a survey, uh, after February vacation, uh, sometime, and they're asking that the survey be completed between February 24th and March 16th. Um, and then they, they, that's, they, they run the whole process, uh, so we don't see the surveys, the results don't come back to us, uh, we just, all we just provide the email addresses and the students' names, they survey the parents directly, information goes back to them directly, and then they use that as part of their reporting process. Uh, they do request that you have a parent orientation and a parent meeting to discuss the process, uh, so we, the entire school community, parents are invited, uh, to a parent orientation on March 5th at 6:30 at the central office building. At the parent orientation, they come out, our representatives, so, um, Kenzie and Amy actually are coming, I believe, those two are gonna be here, uh, they're gonna come out, and they'll be available to the community to explain what tiered focus monitoring is, how it works, what they look at, uh, what's gonna happen on the day of the site visit, um, and obviously, we'll be doing some, uh, invitations to the community through, uh, Blackboard Connect, Twitter, uh, Facebook pages, et cetera, to, uh, invite parents to come out to find out about the process. So then they do a site visit on the 17th, uh, and even, even this is a little more, is minimal compared to what it used to be, and what they originally proposed. Originally, they were gonna come out for two days, uh, they were gonna come the 16th and the 17th, now they're just coming on one day. So their, their visit, it's a one-day, one-day visit, where they're gonna do a records review, uh, interview staff, uh, and, um, special education PAC members, and do an exit meeting. So if we go to the next page, there's a link to the actual schedule of what's gonna happen during the visit. And so they'll, they'll be arriving at 8:30 that morning, um, they'll be doing a student record review. Now, this is actually the most intensive part of the process onsite, uh, is, they've identified students where we need to pull their record, um, mostly ELL and specialized students, really mostly specialized students, and then they go through that file to make sure everything's in place, we've met all our timelines, all the IEPs are signed, you know, so they, they're looking at all the regulations around IEPs and special education, and they do a file review to say, do your files meet the standard? And Karen, do you know the exact number they're doing, are they doing 10, 14?
Yeah, it's, it's about, it's about 12.
For 12?
We've already done 12 and then they're doing an extra 12.
On that day, they're going to do, they'll pull 12 files that they've identified for us to, to go through.
Do you know what they are beforehand?
The names of students, yes. Yep. Uh, and then they do some interviews, uh, they're going to interview Christine Cabal, assistant principal at the middle high school. Uh, they want to, specifically the, she was selected because they wanted to do someone who does discipline at the middle high school level, uh, of special education students. Uh, they want to, I, um, interview one of the team chairs, so they're going to interview Melissa Leary, um, who's a special education team chair. Uh, they want to interview the middle high school principals, Mr. Schultz, uh, will be interviewed. Uh, Karen is the director of special education, Meredith is our civil rights coordinator, uh, and Carol Spiegel Kelsey is our, uh, our pack, our parent, specialized parent group representative. Uh, so they'll do all those interviews, um, and then they do an exit meeting. Uh, so the exit meeting will be myself, Karen, Meredith and Melissa Leary. And at the exit meeting, they'll give us some preliminary findings verbally. And then obviously later on, we're going to get a much more detailed report, uh, of what's going to happen, um, you know, what the results are, what are, how, you know, if there are any concerns about compliance and any recommendations they have for us to make changes. You know, so, you know, what happens afterwards, um, they connect the exit meeting and then they follow up with a report with findings, recommendations, which will be shared with the school committee, will be shared with the community as a whole. Tie Karen timeline on that, usually that report is probably next, is that the spring or is it early next fall? Do you remember?
No, I think it's.
In the spring. And so we should have those, hopefully have those results by the end of the year and we'll share that back to the committee. Uh, just as a last piece, uh, I do want to do a, just some thank yous. Um, so there's, there's a lot of people put a lot of time into this, but particularly Karen's put a lot of time into this, Meredith's put a lot of time into it. Uh, Michelle Taylor is our ELL coordinator last year, you know, she was involved in uploading a lot of the records. Uh, Beth Goodwin, who was here this evening, uh, Pat Tobin is our ELL teachers were involved in a lot of the record up, upload. Uh, so the, these people have put a lot of time and energy into going through our records, making sure they have them all, uploading them into the system. Uh, so there's, there's hours of work that, that really has all been done. The site, the site visits probably is the easy part. Uh, the, the hard part happened when all this, all this documentation was put together and uploaded and these were the key people who did that work. Uh, so I wanted to recognize them to the committee, uh, recognize them to the community for all the time and effort they put into it. Uh, Meredith and Karen, I don't know if there's anybody else who'd be on that list, maybe Melissa Leary, because I know Melissa's been helping you a little bit, Karen. Uh, I don't know if I missed anybody else as a recognition.
I just want to acknowledge, even though it says, um, Pat and Beth, just all this, the correlating that they've done of student records, the ELL process of this is done the day prior and involves the same document review and that sort of thing, but it is a slightly separate process.
And so that visit's coming up and, uh, af, you know, after we, once we get our reports and our findings back, we'll report that back to the committee.
Thank you Karen and Meredith, and I'm sure you two being the only two here of that list will take the kudos for all of them tonight.
Yeah.
Is that, no, thank you very much. You have any crowd questions, comments on that presentation?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, uh, upcoming events. So as always, a lot of things coming up over the next few, over, between now and our next meeting in the next month. Uh, you know, I want to mention tonight, this event already happened, it's on the list, is today was the PTO family pasta dinner over at the elementary school, it had a great turnout. I was, I was over there for a little bit and it was just a really strong turnout. Uh, Tammy, you're here, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the middle school drama club and when bad things happen, if I'll take a minute to do that, Will, you can do that.
Thank you. This is really exciting. This is my fourth year, I'm kind of, I, I want to keep calling myself, um, a rookie, um, but I eventually am not going to, but, um, a rookie at this, but we have over, uh, over, um, 45 students that are going to be part of the production this, this weekend, which is pretty incredible. Um, we've been working really, really hard. It's called When Bad Things Happen to Good Actors. It's, uh, the, the storyline is, um, middle school students putting on a play on Wizard of Oz and so everything that can go wrong does and the kids have done a lot of study on character, um, characterization and, um, plays, it's, it's actually really, and it's a comedy, it's hilarious. I definitely recommend coming, it's six o'clock on Saturday and two o'clock on Sunday. Very worth your while. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Um, and then we have the senior show coming up on February 27th. That's always, uh, has a huge community turnout, uh, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, parent conferences at both buildings in March. Um, I mean, not, not to read everything on the list, uh, the other thing that is very popular, two other very popular events historically is March Music Madness, which is March 25th, 6:00 PM at the middle high school, and then Community Readers Day. Uh, Community Readers Day at the elementary school is March 26th. Uh, that's, and that, that is always a great event, uh, in terms of reach out to the community and having a community member come in and read in every classroom in the building. I know Andy participated in that last year and members of the, last couple of years. Uh, and we always have some members of the community who are involved in that. So over the next two months, we've got a lot of great things going on. Jay, you did last year as well?
That, that day, I'll put on a personal day for it again.
All right, so you got.
If we're invited to do it again. I don't know if I stumbled over too many words in my first grade class last year.
I think the email already got sent out, so if they didn't get it.
Yeah.
So, all right, so like I said, a lot, a lot of great stuff coming up over the next, uh, couple of months.
Scott, is the month of May coming up still or not?
Which ones?
13, 14. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I thought that was, is that taken on the list?
It didn't go on the list. It's on my notes. That sounds really good, too.
So, so the high school drama production is also coming up, which the dates are March, March 13th and 14th. They were not on the list.
I'm trying to get through this.
So.
You got some good copy of this?
Yeah, uh, I, I, do you know, I assume Catherine got a cop, Kathy got a copy of the upcoming events? All right. And then moving on to recommendations from the superintendent, our last item. Um, so the educational support professionals evaluation. Uh, this, this fall, we had a joint committee made up of teachers, educational support professionals and administrators, worked to review and, review and revise the evaluation system for ESPs. Uh, the committee has proposed, uh, a revision, uh, actually the creation of a vision and a process, uh, and a revision of the evaluation form. The new vision statement and process has been revised and has been approved by the ESP unit. You know, my recommendation would be that the committee approve these documents. Uh, and I'll just talk a little bit about the process and a little bit about the changes. Uh, I'm not going to go through every specific change. Uh, you know, so the first thing in terms of the concept of a vision and process is under the old system for evaluation for the ESPs, there actually wasn't a, uh, established process. There was a form and the essence of the process was the form needed to be completed, the evaluation needed to be completed before the end of the school year. Uh, but it didn't really lay out, uh, a steps and process of how that was going to occur. And one of the concerns was that sometimes those ESP evaluations were really happening almost too late in the year, uh, and towards the, really the last week of school. And, and there were concerns about that on both sides, both from the ESPs and from the administration. So we said it would make sense to be actually outline a process of how these evaluations are going to take place. I won't read the entire process to you, it's linked in there, but I will read the vision statement. Uh, so the vision statement we created is the purpose of the evaluation process is to promote student learning, growth and achievement by providing educational support professionals with feedback and a collaborative process to enhance opportunities for professional growth and, and celebration, recognition, and sorry, celebration and recognize staff who maintain effective practices. Um, and obviously we collaboratively wrote the vision together. And then in just in turn, we, the process just established some timelines of the ESPs knowing who their evaluator is going to be by October 1st, uh, you know, a timeline for the, for the evaluation to be completed, uh, that a process for if the concerns are arising during the year, how we're going to address them. Uh, as I said, we're not going to, we're not going to read you through the entire process, uh, but this is, this is actually a totally new document. Uh, we also changed the definitions of the rating scale and I'll show you the rating scale in a second. Uh, so our new definitions are the ESPs can be rated outstanding, which means demonstrates exemplary performance on a consistent basis. They can be rated meets expectations, which demonstrates proficient performance that meets the standard on a consistent basis. Uh, they can identify as having an area of for growth, uh, demonstrates performance that meets the standard inconsistently, uh, and/or they can be rated as unsatisfactory, uh, consistently demonstrates performance that does not meet the standard. Uh, so that's a new rating scale for the form. And then we revised, uh, the evaluation form itself, um, which is also in everyone's So it's a total of 12 questions, um, and then there's a narrative part. Uh, and the narratives are in what areas has the ESP excelled, uh, please comment on any individual qualities which enhance effectiveness of the ESP, uh, what are the areas, if any, for professional growth, uh, and educator or administrator suggestions. Uh, and then there's a, a response section for the ESP if they want to respond to the evaluation or have any concerns about it. Uh, you know, so this was done in a collaborative process over several, over several meetings. Um, and I, I would, um, make the recommendation that the committee, um, move forward with approving, uh, the new evaluation, uh, vision and process and the new evaluation form.
All right, I would entertain a motion if someone would like to make one to approve the, uh, new revisions to go into full effect for the 2020, 2021 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the new vision statement, uh, process and revised evaluation form to be used as part of the evaluation system for the educational support professionals.
Wait here a second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Jason?
I have a couple of questions. In the process, is there anything about how many times it'd be observed? If there's any formal process of they'll have some sort of observation by a certain date just to?
So the, the ESP, this process is not defined an observation.
Okay.
And so it is a process where, um, the administrator will meet with the ESP prior to the evaluation form being finalized, uh, the administrator and the ESP could complete the form collaboratively at the meeting. So it is, is based on, um, overall perceptions. The other piece of this is also ties in, uh, and, and the ESP roles are varied. There's a wide variety of ESP roles within the district. Um, so some people are actually, through their role, they might be tied into a program that works directly with one special ed teacher. That special ed teacher also has the opportunity to weigh in, uh, on, on the performance of the, of the, of the ESP in their program. Other ESPs may not be tied to a specific teacher, maybe supporting a wide range of teachers, uh, or might be a life monitor, uh, and their work is directly with the administrator. So where appropriate, we're also seeking teacher feedback. Uh, but the, we want to be real clear through the process that the teachers aren't completing the evaluation. The evaluation is being done by the administrator, but the input is, the input of the teacher's side. I don't know if that, that answers the question?
It does, and I actually answered my second question.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any others? Thank you. Reports from the school committee. Anybody have anything before we adjourn?
I do. Jason, do you want to go first? Um, I'd like to acknowledge, um, Emma Simmons, the senior basketball player. She is 10th pla, 10th player in school history to score 1,000 points. I just got an email from Coach Rosen this morning about tomorrow being the last home game. Um, and it's really celebrating the season that this, the, um, this basketball team has had and, you know, with a win, they win the league title and there's a lot of great things going on in Carver sports. And I also want to, um, recognize Coach Rosen and his efforts to integrate the younger kids. Um, almost every home game, you're seeing, you know, the third, kids' youngest, third grade, fourth grade, fifth, sixth, all those travel teams, all those players are there, they're supporting, really built up this awesome community. Um, so it's, it's very refreshing to see and I know by the time this airs, it might be too late, but, um, get out there and try to support this team because they're, they're doing great things.
And hopefully they'll have a home game in the tournament. We don't know that, we don't know that yet, but, uh, it's possible that they could have a home game in the tournament as well.
What time is the game tomorrow?
Uh, the JV is five and the varsity is at 6:30. And I, the way, I mean, this is a nice colorful email he sent out too, and it's, they want to pack the house, so pack the house, Carver.
Great. Anyone else?
And start, spend the first hour down at the, uh, production.
Yeah. Tomorrow night's Friday, right?
Yeah.
Is that, so I might.
Saturday, Sunday.
Saturday.
So basketball, then, yeah, do it all, yep. And then enjoy vacation.
Yeah.